With this, sir.
He's getting comfortable.
Yeah. And our first action here is to take public comment. So if there's anyone in the room wishing to provide public comment, we'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes. And please provide us your name and the section of the county language inside. So shall we start in hot? Right? Hearing none there. Those of you on Zoom or on your phones, if you'd like to make a public comment, please let it be known now. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand.
Yep, the first one is on the top of the list, Reese.
Muggerdichen.
Yep.
Okay.
The doors are locked upstairs. Nobody can get in.
Hello, this is Reese Muggerdichen. Can I go ahead?
Hi there. Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and share my thoughts tonight. I'm so grateful for your time and your service to the community. I'm in Skamania County, right by Beacon Rock. I'm very concerned about the implementation of a short-term rental ban in the county. We understand the goal of this provision is to protect and conserve the scenic beauty of the gorge. This is something that we wholeheartedly support, but we believe the current plan will be hurting the gorge in many ways. Fifteen years ago, I volunteered to do conservation work with AmeriCorps and was lucky enough to get a post in the Pacific Northwest. I remember the moment I drove around Cape Horn. The outlook, it was beautiful. It was something I had never seen before. The wind, the light, it just connected with my soul. This place instantly felt like home. The short-term rental plan will have severe personal effects on me and my family. Five years ago, my husband and young daughter got their first introduction to the gorge and fell in love, just like I did. We knew then that we wanted to make a future retirement home there. We very carefully considered how we could make this happen. We checked with the county. We checked current regulations. We checked about the enforcement of short-term rentals. That was a key factor in us being able to afford our home and small tree farm. Knowing that short-term rentals were allowed and that they weren't, like, enforced in a ban, we took a huge leap and decided to buy land and go through the lengthy planning process and then build. This was a huge investment for us. Our home here is one of the greatest joys in our life. This change will be detrimental. All of our careful plans are now in jeopardy. We believe this plan will also be very harmful for the local community. For almost two years, we have operated a successful vacation rental home. Our home has brought nearly 700 visitors to the area who were very specifically looking for a home to rent. We promoted and recommended shopping and eating local and visiting the Skamania Lodge for their amazing spa, restaurants, and golf courses. We are proud that our home was able to bring business to this community during a devastating pandemic. Every little bit makes a difference, especially in hard times. We also employ over 10 people locally, from a property manager to cleaning staff, pest control, propane. All of these people, we pay a living wage. By choosing to build our retirement home in this community and use it for short-term rental in the time being, we have brought in significant state and local tax revenue. Since welcoming our first guests, we've paid in over $13,000 into taxes. By eliminating our short-term rental, the community will lose out on almost $80,000 in revenue over the next 10 years. The current provision will push all short-term rentals
Ten seconds.
Now into town. Not only does this create more issues for neighbors over parking, but it will put pressure on the low-income housing and the rentals needed in town. We believe that what you're
That's three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Right. Thank you for your comments. Also, just as a matter of course, we've had written comments that we've received going back into November. There are at least nine of those, and I know that they have all been passed on to you, Alan, and they have been reviewed, so.
I have stated this list. Can I show you that it's actually 13?
Thirteen, okay.
Some were, you know, received today.
Okay.
Actually, the deadline was yesterday, but I did add them.
Right, well, I know I didn't get to those.
Okay.
All right. Do we have another public comment, please?
Yes, Steve McCoy.
All right, Steve.
Hi, good evening. I am Steve McCoy, Staff Attorney for Friends of the Columbia Gorge. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I would like to thank county staff for their hard work on the proposed Skamania County Code. It was a lot of work and very highly detailed. So thank you to the staff for the good job. The revised management plan includes things you may like, things like new firewise requirements to keep county residents and first responders safer, provisions ensuring water availability for farms, easier approval of renewable energy developments, new requirements for mass transit facilities at larger day-use sites to reduce traffic congestion, additional products can be sold at farm stands, and cideries are allowed on the same terms as wineries. However, the revised management plan adopted by the Gorge Commission is a compromise. There are aspects to what the Friends fought against and lost, but on balance, we think the changes will serve Skamania County and the gorge well. And to be clear, there is no short-term rental ban in the proposal. In fact, it explicitly allows overnight accommodations. We urge you to incorporate the changes by adopting Alternative Two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next.
Aiden. Hello, everyone, commissioners, and thank you for your opportunity to comment. My name is Aiden Forsy. I'm a land use planner with the Columbia Gorge Commission. I work closely with Alan and Mike, and I want to follow Steve's lead and take a moment to commend them for the amount and quality of work they've done to get this ordinance in front of you today. We support the adoption of Alternative Two of Ordinance 2021-05, which includes both the revisions made to your ordinance to keep it consistent with the management plan and your staff's proposed revisions that improve clarity and ease of use for landowners in Skamania County. Just wanted to note that you and your planning commission have questioned the rationale of some of these changes, mostly speaking to the changes to the income standard for farb dwangs and agricultural land. We sent you a letter explaining why that standard exists, why the changes were made, and included a letter from Chair Archidus and former Gorge Commissioner Dan Erickson, who strongly supported the change. Just hope that you found that letter useful in thinking about this. I don't have that much more to add, other than that we look forward to continuing this partnership to implement the National Scenic Area Act, and that I'm happy to support your staff in answering any questions to make come up tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Our next individual.
Is Emily.
Hi, thank you for the chance to provide a comment. My name is Emily Glevins, and I'm a resident of Carson. And I just wanted to share that I support updating our scenic land use ordinance, the second alternative, because I'm in favor of maintaining the county's role as a partner in managing the scenic area, especially since Skamania County is such a large portion of the scenic area in Washington. And I'm also in favor of maintaining the annual funding that the county receives as part of this. So thanks for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to share that.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have another comment?
We do. We just have a couple of people join in, so maybe you would ask them to raise their hand if they'd like to.
Okay, we are still taking public comments. We asked that you keep your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself in the area of the county in which you reside. Do we have any further public comments? All right, hearing none. I'm closing public comments. And at this time, okay, I'm sorry.
I was waiting to see if there was anybody.
All right, pardon me.
Is it okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Tamara Kaufman, I am from Carson, Washington. I want to thank you for having this hearing tonight to allow the opportunity for the public to voice their thoughts on Title 22, the National Scenic Area Ordinance for Skamania County. It's no secret there has been a long history of contention surrounding the creation of the National Scenic Area and how it has changed land use destinations throughout the gorge, especially in Skamania County, which has been hit hardest by land acquisitions and restrictions. I respect that history, and I hear the frustrations of people who didn't feel included in the management plan process update. Work is underway to make improvements. As your appointee to the Gorge Commission since June of 2020, I had to quickly get up to speed and learn how the Gorge Commission, the state, the counties, the county planning commissions, and the county planning departments all interact, and it is a very complicated arrangement. As I reported to you last fall, three themes emerged for me from the final management plan update: partnerships, balance, and process. And tonight's meeting and the public comments that have been provided echo that experience. So partnerships, we are all in this together. Balance, the federal act compels us to find a balance between the purposes of the act to protect and enhance resources and protect the economic vitality of the region. Our area is not a national park, it is a national scenic area, with communities and industries, and our decisions affect livelihoods. Process, we must have clear methods in place for ourselves and our partners so that there is a reasonable expectation of how a change is made. Request for change should be equitable and not solely focused on one topic or one interest group. The process of the management plan update was not perfect, but it was long overdue and many improvements were made. It did not cover everything, and it did not get everything right, but the time to object to the specific updates was a year ago and not tonight. As an appointee of Skamania County, a year ago, I did place a vote against passing the management plan, primarily due to flaws in the process of the way it was conducted. A protest vote, if you will. Tonight, a different matter is before us as part of the adoption process for the Skamania County ordinance, even with its imperfections. There is a specific window of time to do so, and it's important that the county retain the right to interpret the ordinances and administer them for its people, and that the county retain the right and the access to funding for the Washington Investment Court. I recommend the Skamania County Commission approve the Title 22 ordinances, but immediately follow up with the Gorge Commission on specific areas of concern that it may have. I and others at the Gorge Commission are pushing to get through this current process and get right back on the horse and start preparing for the next available management plan update, hopefully to be completed in 2025, so that we can correct any mistakes, address any omissions from the 2020 process, and create a rolling-up process to address those concerns in a more timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lannan, we have one other person that would like to make a comment on, too.
Okay.
Matt Ryan.
All right, Mr. Ryan, the floor is yours.
Matt, can you hear us? How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah. How was that turned off? Yeah, we're getting a lot of reverberation and echo.
You need to turn down your phone or, if you're on a computer.
Maybe in my office, maybe that's why.
Is he? If he has his phone on, that's normally what generates that. Try it again.
Sorry about that. How about now?
Much better.
Thank you, yeah, I think that my phone was too close. Thank you. I want to thank all the commission members and county commissioners for your good efforts. And I just, my wife and I live in Underwood, Washington, and have for about 30-plus years now. And having read some of the background information here, we want to just put in our voice and support the Alternative Two because of various reasons, but I think it's much better to keep the control local versus with the Gorge Commission. I think you guys have done a great job in the past. I think there's economic impacts as far as commercial developments. I think there's impacts that will affect permitting process for people who are building or remodeling, putting in solar installations. And then I think just it's best for us to have the discretion kept locally as opposed to ceding it to the Gorge Commission. And really, that's the gist of our comments, so we, again, would like to support that you adopt Alternative Two. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, do we have any other further public comment? All right, hearing none. We are closing public comment, and Alan will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, commissioners. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have based on your own reading of the ordinance proposals or the public comment received. But I did want to point out again, you know, there were some references to Alternative One and Two. There are two alternatives in your packet. The first alternative, Alternative One, would adopt amendments recommended by the Planning Commission. Their recommendation is to adopt changes proposed by county staff, not the changes required by the Gorge Commission. They made that recommendation after a publication on November 16th. And as I understand it, the Planning Commission made this recommendation out of concern about the Gorge 2020 process and concern about some of those substantive changes to the management plan regulations, including things like the agricultural income test, dwellings in large woodland zone, as well as the new short-term rental requirements, which while they do permit rentals, provide for very limited opportunities for that use in the scenic area. I don't think that the land use regulations in the management plan are regulations that our Planning Commission would on their own recommend if they did have, you know, the ability to on their own adopt or make a recommendation for zoning in this part of the county. So to that extent, I think the recommendation is wholly appropriate, but this question really is not about what the rules ought to be in the scenic area. Those have been decided already by the Gorge Commission. And really, I think the question before the board tonight is, does Skamania County want to continue to locally implement Title 22 and these land use regulations that have been adopted by the Gorge Commission? And we've consistently, since 1993, made the decision to continue to stay in the game and do that and provide this service to our residents. So, you know, I think this question is really about what's best for the county and its residents. Do we want to continue to locally implement the plan or hand that responsibility back over to the Gorge Commission? And I think that this current arrangement still makes sense for the county to locally implement. We had a workshop a couple of weeks ago where I talked specifically about some of the reasons why and the benefits that come to the county and its residents as a result of having Title 22.
Could you explicitly spell out what happens if Option One goes through?
So I can't say that I know exactly what would happen, but looking at the act and the management plan, it appears that we would, so what happens regardless is we would have to transmit our ordinance to the Gorge Commission, and they would hold a future meeting and determine whether or not that ordinance is consistent. That would then go to the Secretary of Agriculture for a second consistency determination. If the
That's with our local planners, you guys, you've created your plans, which are not 100% consistent with what the Gorge Commission has come up with.
So I would say the changes that we've made as staff, excluding the ones that were required, are consistent. They, it's not that they're inconsistent, it's just not the full package, right? Right? So if that goes to the Gorge Commission without the whole package, I would imagine that they would determine that as a whole Title 22 is inconsistent. And then they would send it back to us and tell us to fix it, and then we would have to fix it and send it back to them. And I think we got two chances, two tries. I don't know, Adam, if you have anything to add in there. But essentially, if we do not adopt the amendments that are required and the Gorge Commission determines that Title 22 becomes inconsistent.
What point does the Secretary of Agriculture get his informative?
That might be after the Gorge Commission determines consistency, but really where it lands.
The Gorge Commission would first have to agree that our Option One was tolerable, and if they don't, it's so.
Well, then it goes back to us. If we, but ultimately, if we do not amend it, they will then have time to adopt an ordinance for Skamania County, and then they will implement those same rules. And they've adopted an ordinance, in fact, today they did that for Clickitat County. Clickitat is the one out of the six counties that does not have their own ordinance, and so the Gorge Commission staff administers the regulations in Clickitat County. So I think we could assume they would adopt the same ordinance for Skamania County and then take that responsibility on themselves.
Hey, I ask you, could it happen that if we were to do that, that if the Gorge Commission didn't accept it and send it on to the Department of Agriculture for the Agricultural Secretary, they could have a moratorium on any decisions to be made in that time period? So that we would literally be sitting dead in the water, waiting for a final decision?
Yeah, I can't say I'm exactly sure what that would look like, just because I think it's unprecedented, but there would be a period of time before, in order for that transition to take place, and you go ahead.
Christine, do you have a comment, please?
Well, I'm just here for clarification, so if you call on me, I can answer questions.
All right. We have to do clarification on that point, but.
Yes, well, good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Christina Volian-Pussey. I'm the Executive Director of the Gorge Commission. And the idea is to have the ordinance be consistent with revisions from the management plan, and those will then go to the Gorge Commission for review and approval. And once the Gorge Commission determines that the land use ordinance for Skamania County is consistent with the changes in the plan, then that's when it goes to the Secretary of Agriculture for concurrence. And once we get the concurrence, then the ordinance is in effect. And we highly encourage you to adopt the full ordinance with Option Two, because if you move forward with Option One and it is not approved by the Gorge Commission, then there would be different paths. We either send it back to you for reconsideration, and if you wouldn't want to reconsider it and adopt the revision, then there would be the process of the Gorge Commission taking over the ordinance, which we really don't want to do. We've had a really good partnership for all these years. We feel that some of the issues that have come up, either through the Planning Commission or through some public comment, that we feel that we have an opportunity in the future to deal with those. And as Commissioner Kaufman, Gorge Commissioner Kaufman, has mentioned, there are areas that we want to review again based on the county's or work with the county staff. So we're hoping that, and encouraging you to adopt the ordinance tonight, and then whatever other issues arise in the next couple of years, we'll be able to address those and bring them back into Gorge 2020. Does that answer your question?
It was your question. But, yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, you know, it's either consistent or it's not. And if it's not, then we will not be able to continue local implementation.
But we would, voting for Option One doesn't really let us have Option One.
Yeah, I think it's all or nothing.
Yeah, we would lose.
Either inconsistent or it's consistent.
Okay. So for clarity, you know, we're going to move to Option Two here in a minute, but you're going to ask for action on One. You know, help me better understand Option Two.
So Option Two includes all of the staff changes that were recommended in Option One, as well as all the required changes by the Gorge Commission. And those were extensive changes that were made to the management plan, which we spent several months then finding where those fit into Title 22 and made those changes. We did get some assistance from Gorge Commission staff, issues where we had questions and clarifications, and we, as well as we could, modeled it after some of the changes that they made to their Clickitat County ordinance. But we have, any changes above and beyond that, again, were made by staff. We believe they're consistent with the management plan. We think that they're better for the county. So Option Two, our hope is that the Gorge Commission would find that consistent. I do want to point out, I did get one comment today from Aiden Forsy, who's a planner with the Gorge Commission, who we heard from earlier today. There's a couple minor changes that they've identified for us in the special management area, cultural resource protections, that apply specifically to federal projects. So this might not even be something that the county has a say in, but it's in our plan, and it's just a matter of crossing out a couple words with regard to review by the Forest Service. So there's a couple sections where we're reviewing cultural resource assessments, and the current language says the Forest Service or the administrator, and the management plan says just the Forest Service. So there's a couple red lines that I did want to identify that we would make to Title 22. So those are the two options. It's the Planning Commission recommendation or really maintaining consistency with the management plan. So I don't think that there needs to be two decisions or two motions. You could go that way if you would like. You could approve both. Option One and Option Two do not conflict with each other.
Can you spell that out? I'm a little confused.
But, well, what I'm saying is, the recommendation is to approve Ordinance 2021-05, and there are two alternatives in your packet, and you can just make a motion to approve one alternative or the other. I'm also saying that because Alternative Two only adds to Option One, I don't think it'd be a problem to adopt both. I don't think that's necessary, and I wouldn't recommend it necessarily, but.
What is your recommendation?
Well, so, thank you for that. My responsibility coming before the board is to forward the Planning Commission's recommendation, and the Planning Commission's recommendation is to approve Option or Alternative One. But in my professional capacity, I have to advise you to adopt Alternative Two, because that is, in my opinion, in the best interest of the county and its residents, to continue to implement the National Scenic Area regulations. And if there is a discussion to be had in the future about changing those regulations, the proper avenue to do that through the next revision process. If, for whatever reason, the commissioners decide that this is no longer in our interest, I think that there's probably a better time and place to have that conversation and make a plan for winding down our local implementation.
Okay, is it reasonable, then, to compare this to what Clark County just went through?
Yeah, they went through a very similar process. In fact, all the counties did.
The Planning Commission had one opinion, the board had another.
Right. So the Planning Commission and its advisory, and while they've done a lot of work on this issue, we are the ultimate authority. So that gives us the ability to say, yes, we appreciate the work that the Planning Commission did, however, ultimately, the board is the one that makes the final decision. So we take everything into consideration.
All right. I just wanted to be very clear on the difference between, you know, One and Two.
So, I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the motion, and the way I look at it is this. I'm going to call for Alternative Two. If it passes, we're done. If it doesn't pass, then we're going to step back and go through Alternative One. So with that in mind.
All right, we'll call for the motion.
I would like to make the motion that we pass Ordinance Number 2021-05, Alternative Two.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, do we have further discussion?
I have some discussion.
All right.
From my angle, I would love to see the whole National Scenic Area dismantled completely and that all the regulations be done countywide, but that's not one of the options. I'm tempted on Option One simply, well, for various reasons, but Option Two, I just want to, I was reading through the findings part, and I just wanted to offer clarification here. It says that the implementation of Number Two under the findings, implementation of NSA regulations by the county's Community Development Department is in the best interest of county residents. And I just want to say that over the past five years, I've heard numerous county residents with significant complaints about the NSA regulations. I recognize this is a by-state rule instigated by the federal government. I also believe, and I've expressed this numerous times to Alan, that our Community Development Department does a great job of mitigating some of the inconveniences and the owner's regulations put on residences' private property through the National Scenic Area Act. One of the main arguments received, that we've received to pass Option Two is so that people would not have to go through the Gorge Commission directly to get approvals, and that should tell you something. People who actually want the National Scenic Area do not want it directly regulated by the Gorge Commission. So I guess my bottom line is I hate the choice that I'm in. I do agree 100% that Alan and his team do a great job of, if somebody comes in there with a plan and it doesn't meet the requirements, they don't just say, "No, can't do it, sorry." They'll say, "You can't do it as is, but if you do this or this, you know, we can make it work." And so I greatly appreciate that, and I guess if that's what And so I greatly appreciate that, and I guess if that's what Option 2 is trying to get at, I can do it with very draggy feet.
Okay, good mark. All right.
I have-
Motion, we have a second.
No, that's a good one.
All right, this is to approve-
Approve.
Option 2.
Ordinance Number 2021-05, Alternative 2.
Oh, I'll tell you where.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed. And I tell you, if you had gone the other way, I would have gone the other way. This basically is on the record as a protest vote. I think that if we do this unanimously, we basically give up some of our right to object in the future. I've got a number of things that I could go into in depth here. I'm just going to share one that I came-
Before you do that, I just want to say I greatly appreciate your protest vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
About five years ago, I think it was One Gorge, had a symposium over in Hood River, and it was a fellow who was an assistant to Mark Hatfield, who was one of the principal authors of the bill and a huge supporter of it, and one of the things that he said in his conversation was, he said, you know, "I worked with Senator very closely for many years on this," and he said, "Most of that bill came out of the end of my pen." So he actually did the writing of it, right? But he said, "At the time, the Senator was primarily concerned with what he called creepage within the act, and I was sitting there thinking creepage, expansion of the urban areas." And so he didn't explain it at the time, but afterwards, there was a Q and A, and I asked him, I said, "What do you mean, that the urban areas are going to grow beyond what the restrictions are?" And he said, "No, quite the opposite. His concern was that the restrictions imposed on the scenic portion would become more onerous." And as I made my way through the revisions, there were just so many things that I'm more piling on of further restrictions and a lot of things that I questioned as necessary. I think we need to pass it because, you know, to turn it back to the Gorge Commission itself would not be in the best interest of our people. So I just wanted to be on the record. All right? Anything further than that? All right? I think we're done here for today. I thank everyone for their input, Alan, Planning Commission, a lot of work. Thank you all.
Thank you.